I'd like to call this meeting of the Onslow County Planning Board to order. If everyone would please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day that you have given us. Please keep safe everyone who has come out for our meeting this evening. We ask that our efforts be insightful and guided by understanding and wisdom so that we may be coming to fair and just decisions in all of the matters before us. In Jesus' name that we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Just a reminder to make sure your cellphones are off. We have minutes from the last meeting. If everyone's had a chance to go over them, I would take a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the minutes from the last meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved.
Thank you, Chairwoman, and thank you all of you that have come out this evening. I know for many of us, this is the beginning of a special, long holiday weekend. I'd also like to welcome our viewers at home. We've made an effort this evening to video-record this presentation to ensure that anyone in the county will have access to this information on our proposed zoning ordinance, whether or not they're comfortable attending a meeting live and in person. My name is Jessica Feaster-Ruh. I am the Onslow County Planning and Development Director, and my staff and I are very excited, very excited, to finally present to you the updated Onslow County zoning ordinance. So we're going to jump in. We're going to start at the very beginning on this timeline in front of you. In 2003, Onslow County adopted their first zoning ordinances. And the way they did that was they adopted the ordinances and then, in seven separate sections, they incrementally adopted zoning maps. And those same seven segments of the county that were used then, we've still use today because they're a very effective way to show and demonstrate maps. For the next 10 years or so, the county got acclimated to using their new zoning tools and their zoning ordinances. And then in 2015, they decided it was time to evaluate looking at updating the ordinances. Now, you may ask, why would we do that? It's important for people to understand that all land use documents have a lifespan of about 10 or 15 years. So over that time of 10 or 15 years, there is a lot of changes that occur. If you look at our community, our population has exploded. We have done a number of text amendments. Sewer has changed the landscape in many places. Some bypasses have changed the landscape in many places. And then, in addition to that, there's a lot of state changes. The state changes land use law all the time, and that has to be incorporated in. And when you take all of these things into account and put them in that same document, whether it be a subdivision plan, a zoning, or subdivision ordinance, or zoning ordinance, or housing code, or land use plan, you really need to look back and see if it's still being an effective tool to implement the safety controls that zoning offers. And so I point that out because I know many people can get very nervous when they start hearing some of the terms that we're going to use frequently tonight. You're going to hear words like assigning a new zoning district, rezonings, new ordinance. And this is really a natural and organic thing that happens when you implement these regulations. You have to update them. And now we're at a point where it's actually legally required that we do this update as a result of some changes that the state made in 2019. And so, back to our original project, we initiated our public outreach on the zoning ordinance update in 2016. We worked with a code-writing consultant and benchmark, and a lot of good progress was made. We did our outreach. We started this project like we start any project. We look at what's working. We look at what's not working. We look at where things have changed. And then you make goals and objectives, and you create a project scope, and you get started. And you take those items to the community and the people that use this ordinance and are impacted by it, and you get input. And so for the next two years, a great deal of work was done on this ordinance. And in September of 2018, we were kind of thrown a curveball with Hurricane Florence. And at that point in time, the work on this ordinance was that was just about ready to come before you, like this one is tonight, was stopped when pretty much all of our staff resources were needed to go deal with storm damage, FEMA, grant writing, and just all-around recovery efforts. And so in 2019, almost a year after Hurricane Florence, the state was doing something completely different. The Bar Association had been lobbying really hard for an update to land use law for seven years, and it had failed twice. One time it passed the House and not the Senate, the next time the opposite, and then there really was no traction. So in 2019, they finally got this approved, and North Carolina General Statute 160D was adapted. And what that did was merge county and city land use law, but at the same time, it provided a whole other slew of modernizations. And those created a lot of changes that trickle all the way down to the local jurisdictions that use it. And so, last year in 2020, you'll note, we started bringing you a lot of policies. We went back to that draft that had been sitting there since Hurricane Florence. Quite seriously, the last time it was saved on my computer was September 10th, when we reopened this. And we looked at it, and we had to kind of do some of that outreach over again, quite honestly. So we did that. We looked at what was working. We looked at some of the goals. We were very quickly able to identify some things that we knew did not make sense and would not be positive for the community at that point in time, and we got that in there. And then, of course, we had to go through and assess it for compliance with 160D. Now, every single reference to where something is given legislative authority in land use law had to be changed. There's usually 10 or 12 on every page, for instance. And so that alone, figuring out where it was in the new ordinance, was quite a task. And as you'll learn tonight, there's quite a few actual procedures that had to be changed because what we were doing here is not in line with what the state is saying we have to do in the future. What is 160D? Cities had their own set of land use law. Counties had their own set of land use law. They were in two separate sections. They've been merged. That's all we really need to remember about this. Originally, they asked that this would be effective on January 1st, 2021. They realized it was going to take a significant amount of time for every jurisdiction with a zoning ordinance or any land use ordinance to update it. And they since delayed that until July 1st of this year. Why is this really a big deal? So, this is the first time the state of North Carolina has actually reorganized anything in development laws in over 100 years. The first development laws that came to North Carolina were adopted in 1905, and those were some very simple building codes. And then 10 years later, they added some land use law, and then in 1923, they added zoning law, and then they added subdivision law, and housing codes, and subdivision codes, and floodplain management. And if you stop and think, oh, these things were just all packaged so neat and clean to work together, that was not the case. This was just grafted together and grafted together. And so you get through about the 60s and 70s, and then they start amending it. They are amending city stuff, amending county stuff, sometimes in one, sometimes not in the other, sometimes on purpose, sometimes not. And it became so hard to actually go to the state law, which is why the Bar Association had initiated this, and then ended up working with tons of prominent attorneys, developers, home builders, to get this where it was. And so, we've got all of this stuff together, which is wonderful for professional people and builders that work in this, because they've eliminated inconsistencies that apply to one place and not to apply to cities and not to counties. It was very hard to work as an attorney or to work as a consultant and then be in county mode on one project and then shift to the laws that applied to city. One example of this is just the other day, I asked Angie, "Do we need a supermajority vote for this?" And we were talking about something that needed to be voted on, and she's like, "You're back in cities." Well, the first 10 years of my career, I spent in a municipality and didn't even realize that that wasn't even a thing in a county. So that's why it's important and awesome that we're all using the same set of standards. We also have uniform terminology. There are a lot of terms in this ordinance that you're going to see over and over anywhere you go in the state of North Carolina because they're required. The biggest example of this is conditional zoning. Conditional zoning has become conditional use permits, conditional districts, conditional district permitted, where there are a merge of a quasi-judicial process and a legislative process, and they said, "No more of this." A conditional zoning is allowed, and anything else is not allowed. Special use permits are always going to be a quasi-judicial decision, and that's what they will be called from here on out, any jurisdiction that has that. The same for conditional zoning. It is now a legislative process, approved by the commissioners in our case, and follows the same process and has the same meaning everywhere in the state. It also removes archaic terminology. The state of North Carolina is now recognizing that not everyone that works in development is male. They've also recognized that 200-word sentences are not useful to people the same way they may have been back in 1923 when zoning came about, because there was quite literally verbiage in some of these articles and things that had been there that long without any kind of revision. It also incorporates decades of case law. In planning as professionals, we often look to see how something was interpreted by a court somewhere else. And so, there's hundreds of these cases out there, the most famous one being Reed versus Gilbert, which relates to signage. And of course, in that, we want to make sure that we're using all of the things that have been determined by case law, not having to go seek the different case law. And so the state, when they redid this, was very smart, and when they adapted this, they took care of everything that had really been litigated for the last 50 years and made it law. The other great thing that this does is provide a logical structure. Anyone that goes into these state statutes now can very easily navigate to where they're going to. Like-minded processes are put in the same areas, and it's just so much simpler to use and apply. It's divided into 14 very explicit and clear sections. I want to call out some things that are coming from 160D that you're going to see in this draft, that are coming directly from the state law changing and not things that we just wanted to put in here, they're things that we had to put in here. We've talked already about some uniform procedures, like our conditional use permit and our special use permits. You're also going to see some changes with how we issue stop work orders that Kendrick's going to tell you about when we get to Article 5. We now have a 12-month validity for all development approvals, and that's going to include your basic zoning permit. Historically, that's been good for six months. There's something introduced here called permit choice. What that says is if a developer comes in and has a project approved, and before he starts, but while his permit is still valid, he can make the decision whether he wants to use the new rules or the old rules. We have a requirement that conditions are agreed to in writing. This is a pretty big change. So a legislative conditional zoning or quasi-judicial special use permit often have conditions put on them. Now, it will be required of an applicant to actually sign those conditions in writing, and that will become a part of the actual approval. Conditional zoning now requires a site-specific plan, so it has essentially become a site-specific legislative approval. What we mean by this is where we used to say, "We'll grant your conditional zoning, and here's about 20 different things we think would be okay on this parcel." If that's been approved before, recommended by this board and approved by the commissioners, those stand, and that's absolutely fine. But moving forward, they're looking for a site-ready project on those conditional approvals. We also have some provisions for minor changes being allowed on those approvals, which Angie's going to call out later in the presentation. 160D says that if you are going to enforce zoning ordinances, you have to have a reasonably maintained plan. We, of course, have had a land use plan here in Onslow County for quite some time. There's many smaller jurisdictions that have been scrambling since July of 2019 to create a plan just to be able to maintain the right to enforce zoning. They also have suggestions that a reasonably maintained plan is 10 years or so. So what this means for us and an impact it will have means, as soon as we get this adopted, we will be jumping into an update to our comprehensive land use plan in order to maintain that compliance. And that's probably a good thing because our plan works so closely with this ordinance that it'll need to be updated to reflect that. 160D allows us to use a most current reference when it comes to maps or other ordinances. This is a convenience item. Currently, in many places in an ordinance, it has an actual date of a map that was amended, and then you have to go through an actual process to replace it with a new map. This allows us to just, for instance, on a flood map, reference the most current map. One change that many people don't realize is a change is third-party downzonings are prohibited. A lot of people are unaware that anyone in the state of North Carolina can come and ask for any property to be rezoned. So, this will change that, where if Marilyn wants to submit a petition to rezone my property, and I currently am zoned highway business, and she wants to ask for it to be zoned RA, she has to have my approval in writing to make that request, simply stated. It allows for automatic comp plan updates. What does this mean? This means that when we see something and we think it makes sense, but it might not match the land use plan, future land use map, we are now making a statement that says, "We recognize this is not consistent with the plan, but we are recommending it anyway because for these reasons we find it reasonable," and we send that on to the commissioners, and they have their public hearing, and they adopt a similar statement if they agree with that. What will happen if they adopt that rezoning or text amendment is that we'll be able to automatically go into our comprehensive plan and, without all of the administrative paperwork and bureaucracy, just update it. They are making that decision in one swoop, which is a nice thing. We're also going to be required to maintain historical zoning maps. What that will look like is if on July 1st, your property is assigned a new zoning district, you'll now see layers on our GIS system where you can see at what date that zoning changed. So, we've talked a whole lot about how wonderful it is that everyone's under the same set of laws when it comes to land use. There is one notable difference for counties, and that is that we are still expected to exempt legit agricultural uses. I call to your attention the 2019 Farm Act because one thing that ties into this is their definition of agritourism. The legislature made a lot of land use changes in 2019. This one I'm calling out because we are a very rural area in many places of it. And so they've added hunting, fishing, shooting sports, equestrian uses to their already existing definition of agritourism, which we have adopted in our definitions. They've also given guidance that any catering that comes out of a bona fide farm is also exempt from zoning regulations. So we talked about how this project has sort of been done on two occasions. I want to talk about the original goals of what we wanted to get done with this reorganization, and I also want to tell you about a few things that we modified when we restarted this last year. Of course, we wanted to create a user-friendly document. What we have right now has been amended and amended. Of course it has, because it's 18 years old, and it's become very difficult to navigate. There are scattered regulations that should belong together, not unlike what has happened to the state statutes. And we wanted to clean that up. We knew that was something we wanted to do. We wanted to make it more understandable to anyone that might not have a background in land use. We wanted to balance property rights with development controls. We don't want to have rules just to have rules. We have been very careful with any modifications we have, and I think this entire staff here tonight will be happy to explain to you any change and the reason why we feel it's a good one right now. We were told that it was very important to the commissioners that we really maintain our rural areas. So, one of the things that we started with was looking at what was allowed in RA. We all know that our RA zoning district, over time, is doing nothing to protect agricultural land or maintain low density. What is allowed currently in the RA district? If you look at what's allowed and you connect it to the intent of that district, it is not meeting it. We were very careful when we revised those items to maintain that low density and to meet that need. Conversely, we have areas of Onslow County, three of them, that are urbanizing at an incredible pace. Those areas of the county are really requiring more municipal-type planning regulations. And so we very carefully had a look at what the requirements were in those higher-density districts where those areas are urbanizing. We have to be careful when we modernize these development standards that we were reflecting the infrastructure. We have a lot of areas of the county right now that have sewer access that, when zoning came about, we couldn't dream it was out there. And so we wanted to make sure that the densities were offered out in those areas that were more appropriate to areas with those utilities. We wanted to make sure that our zoning districts descriptions were accurate. There's kind of a saying in land use that "The land doesn't know what you color it." But we need to make sure that the description of that zoning district is matching what we are allowing out there moving forward, and so we spent a lot of time there. And lastly, this is something we added last year. We wanted to see what we could do to become more efficient. We have some processes, as in many places, that take three, four, or five months to get an approval. And so we really studied where we could shave time off and still give a really quality review to a project. And Carter's going to tell you about some reorganization and new standards that are going to do just that. We also didn't miss the opportunity where a process worked in one place to use it somewhere else. And you'll see a lot of processes in this ordinance that are reflective of what has been very effective in the subdivision ordinance we adopted last year. So our favorite features of what's being presented to you tonight. Of course, we're very proud we were able to reach 160D compliance. We are extremely excited that we were able to identify areas in the original draft that we no longer felt were appropriate, and removed them. We're looking forward to using our simplified development processes, and we believe the development community is going to enjoy those as well. We've codified many of the common conditions that we see on Board of Adjustment special use permits. Over the last 10 years or so, we continuously see similar projects go to the Board of Adjustment, as some of you on this board know. And the conditions that are being placed on those permits are very similar. In areas where we were constantly seeing requests for two accesses or a paved road or things of that nature, we have added that into the requirements for zoning. So it takes the pressure off of a board up here making a decision to be between a fire marshal recommending a paved road and our ordinance saying, "You don't need that." And that adds a lot of efficiency. We believe this ordinance adds protection for rural subdivisions. You may not be aware of how many subdivisions are actually zoned RA. We get calls from people weekly very upset that their neighbors are allowed to do some of the things that are all right in the RA district and absolutely are okay there, but don't really seem to belong in a residential area. And we'll talk about some of those later this evening. We currently have setback standards in three different sections of the ordinance. In fact, there are areas of Onslow County where if you live on a waterway and a thorough fair, in our certain zoning district, you've got three separate sets of standards. This is a legal nightmare, and it's administratively horrible to implement. And so, we've merged these together, simplified them. You're going to see a couple of districts where we have a lot of thorough fares, where there's a little bit different setback, and that was made to accommodate that and simplify this. There's also very clear, separate setbacks for accessory structures, and those are defined. We've completely revised our home occupation standards. The ordinance we had regulating that simply was not working anymore. We went around to our neighbors in other areas of the state. We looked at what they were doing that was effective. We drafted a new home occupation ordinance and had our attorney review and blessed that, and that is what is in this ordinance. And that is primarily to protect the surrounding community from someone that's operating a business out of their home. Throughout this presentation, our staff will call to attention areas. We have updated policies on hot topics. I'll let them point those out as they get to them. We've removed a lot of ambiguity in decision-making. There was areas of our current zoning ordinance that I was not comfortable with staff making a certain decision, and in some cases, even this planning board as an advisory board being asked to make a decision, and so that has been removed. We have clear submitted requirements. We believe we'll make the first Monday of the month in our office go much smoother because anyone that comes in for a development meeting is going to see the ordinance, and it is so easy to understand the way it is set up now. The modifications, text amendments, rezonings, and conditional zonings that have happened over the last five years have been maintained. You'll recall in 2019, we did a great deal of text amendments regarding to flag lots, accessory structures, and setback definitions. We've transferred those into this draft because they're working. Our work on that several years ago was effective. This says we maintain our short-term rental policy. We hear a lot about Airbnbs. Our short-term rental policy is we don't have one. We did not feel it was an appropriate time to start regulating these in unincorporated Onslow County. That said, should the environment change, this is something we can certainly come back to as this board and work through, but at this time, those are not included in this ordinance. We've also made a lot of reorganization to our multifamily regulations. In 2003, when the original zoning ordinance was adopted, if you heard "multifamily," you probably just thought, "Well, that's an apartment complex." Well, now in 2021, we have a lot of development options for multifamily that are not just an apartment complex. In addition to traditional condos and townhouses, we're also seeing requests for multifamily tiny home units and just otherwise small, single-family structures, but in a more condominiumized type of ownership. And we needed to be able to accommodate and help these people coming to us with those types of requests. And so we've expanded that section of the ordinance to encompass and be able to apply to all of those things. And we also have a very modernized use chart. When you look through this use chart, which will be presented to you in Article 9, you'll see that it is far more effective, clear, and encompassing than what we have now. It also has added a number of uses that weren't even a thing when we had our first zoning I'm going to pause here because as much as I'd love to stand up here and talk to you about zoning all night, I am only the conductor of this orchestra, and I'm going to introduce you to the people that help play the music. We have our land use administrator, Angie Manning. Robert Goff is one of our planners. He has helped us tremendously with our mapping during this project. I have Mr. Carter Metcalf here. He is another one of our planners. And I have Mr. Kendrick Stanton, who is our Chief Zoning Officer. As we progress through the evening, they'll be getting up here and presenting the sections of the ordinance as it relates to their area of expertise. At this point, we're going to jump into the ordinance. I'm going to walk you through the first three sections. There's not a lot of substantial change in these three articles from what we have now. Most of the changes are reorganization and 160D mandates. So we have our Article 1. This is our general provisions, right? All zoning ordinances have this section. What does it do? It provides the purpose of the ordinance. What is the purpose of the ordinance? It's basically a tool to implement the land use plan, if you want to think of it that way. We want to protect land- We want to protect land values and people and we want to protect uses from other uses. And that's all that says. It also outlines our legislative authority, which for those of you paying attention this evening will know that comes from North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter 160D. It defines our jurisdiction. It says we are allowed to apply these regulations within unincorporated Onslow County. It exempts bona fide farms, because we are a county. It explains permit choice that we talked about earlier. It outlines plan consistency requirements. And it guides the statute of limitations, which is a fancy way of saying if you want to appeal X, you have Y amount of time. I'm very excited about the definitions. I could almost nerd out on you on these. This is one area we spent a whole lot of time because they're very important. The first thing I'll call your attention to is that everything in our use table has a definition. That is not a feature of the ordinance we've been operating under now. We also have consistency with definitions that were recommended by the North Carolina General Statutes. In many cases, they provided an example of a definition that we used. And the reason we use that is many times in litigation over a land use development approval, they're going to go find some kind of disconnect between a definition, whatever's in the ordinance. And so we use those definitions for that reason. We're also excited that this matches everything in the definition section of our new flood in our new subdivision ordinances. So last year, we had two other big land use ordinances adapted, which are already 160D compliant. When we brought those through you all, they already were set up that way to be effective July 1st. So those definitions match. Any terms that were recently amended, I've already mentioned, we have brought forth into this ordinance. And we're also kind of excited of its new location. It's prominently located to highlight its importance in Article 2. In our administrative agency section, this is required. This outlines the boards and groups that are responsible for implementing this ordinance and what their responsibilities are. Here in Onslow County, of course, we have our seven-member legislative decision-makers of the Board of Commissioners. They're responsible for hearing our recommendations, adopting plans, adopting text amendments, adopting rezonings, and then adopting conditional zoning. We have our seven-member advisory planning board, who is responsible for making recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. You can also be assigned the tasks of small area plans or land use plans, which will likely happen here shortly. We have our Board of Adjustment, which is our quasi-judicial body. They are responsible for evaluating appeals of staff decisions, of special use permits, and of evaluating variance requests. Our technical review committee is one many people are less familiar with. This is a 21-member board that reviews development proposals now on minor and major site plans, which you'll learn about later, and provide comments as they relate to their agencies. We put everyone around the table for input. Remember, this zoning ordinance does not act all on its own. It would be much easier if it did, but we work with DOT, we work with the MPO, we work with the Division of Coastal Management, we work with EMS, we work with the fire departments. And we have all of these other things to consider when somebody comes and has this plan they're excited about. And the goal of this is to make sure everyone with jurisdiction on anything is looking at it around the same table before anything progresses too far or is approved. And then we have the responsibilities of our planning department and our zoning administrator. The next section is Article 4, and this is going to get into areas where we're going to see some more substantial changes. And I'm going to turn it over to our land use administrator, Angie Manning, to tell you about those. Thank you.
Article 4 outlines the procedures for all the different types of zoning approvals that are encompassed in the zoning ordinance. It may be one of the most boring articles, but it's one that we have spent a lot of time to make sure that it's easy to understand step-by-step the approval processes for the different types of zoning approvals. This is going to help staff and it's also going to help applicants and citizens as they are experiencing the zoning change. We did a lot of standardization where we could. And one of the things that we're most excited about in terms of standardization is notices to property owners for public hearings. We currently have three different standards, depending on the type of public hearing that's going to be involved. And now we're going to only have one. And that's going to be a 300-foot buffer around the subject properties where those neighboring property owners would get notices, whether it's a legislative hearing for rezonings or a quasi-judicial hearing for such uses as variances and special use permits. The next set of changes involves our conditional zoning process, which Jessie just talked about. There's not a tremendous amount of change in that process. And conditional zoning was the name that we were already using and the name that 160D asked us to use, so that's a help. Those conditional zoning districts are floating districts. That mirror each base district where a developer can come in with a site-specific plan to have the property rezoned for his specific development. We created another floating district called the PDD, which is a planned development district where that would accommodate mixed-use projects. One of the proposed changes that we have is that a neighborhood meeting would be required by the applicant prior to them submitting the application to our office. The other two changes are 160D changes that Jessie already touched on, one being that the site plan and the uses would have to match. There wouldn't be a separate list of other types of uses that would be allowed in that conditional district, but it would be uses that mirror that site-specific plan. The second one is that all of the conditions would have to be in writing. Of course, the application comes in with the signature of the applicant and the property owner. But as it goes through the process, through this board and the Board of Commissioners, if other conditions are added, then we've outlined a process where that property owner would then sign that ordinance before it's then finally approved. Planning board consistency statements. This is a change. That planning board, as the recommending body, will have to adopt a consistency statement on how that recommended change is or is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. In 2006, the legislature made that change for governing boards to adopt those types of statements when they considered zoning changes. And now the planning board's going to be asked to do the same. And tonight, you've got two consistency statements for you to consider later on. The land use plan will be deemed amended with inconsistent rezonings. Again, there won't have to be a separate follow-up process when there's a rezoning that has been approved because the board felt like that it made sense, it was in the public interest, and because of changing conditions, they approved it even though it wasn't consistent with that future land use map. That map will then be deemed approved with that approval. The next set of procedures involves three site plan processes. We're probably way too excited about this, but I think it's going to help both applicants and the staff because we don't have these processes formalized currently in the ordinance. We have some policies and then we have some ordinance, but there's not enough consistency on how we do these. And so what we've done is developed a table in the ordinance that will allow an applicant, depending on exactly what they're proposing, they'll know which site plan they'll need to submit and which process is going to be involved. We have the basic site plan, a minor site plan, and a major site plan. The basic site plan is one that'll come in with a building application for single-family dwelling or for an accessory structure or for a pool or for a home occupation. And those will be site plans that are reviewed at the staff level, the land use staff level. It won't go to other TRC members. Then we have the minor and the major. And we mirrored those processes similar to the minor and major subdivision processes that we created with the new subdivision ordinance last summer. So the minor site plan would be sent electronically to the different TRC members that were alluded to. And they would provide comments back. And then we would submit those to the applicant to make any corrections or modifications. And the plan would then be approved. Major site plans are going to be for special use permits, but it's also going to be for a new shopping center, a multifamily apartment project. Currently, we don't have that as a process. If it's not a special use permit, they don't come to TRC. And so what you have is you have developers having to go speak to DOT, they're having to go meet with ONWASA, and they don't have the opportunity to have each of those agencies around the table. And that's invaluable type of meeting interaction because what can happen is a fire marshal may have a recommendation or a comment that has a direct impact on ONWASA. And they need to work together to come up with a solution that's going to work for everybody. And so this process is going to allow a lot more collaboration before grounds ever broke. Also, part of the site plan process that we have in the text of the ordinance are specific provisions for what constitutes a minor amendment. Currently, the zoning administrator has to make those calls on what's major and what's minor. And now that's going to be a specific list that's in the ordinance. That's going to help both our staff, but it's also going to help that applicant to understand that the change that they want, need to make for a site plan, whether it's going to be something that land use staff can approve administratively or if they need to go back through a formal review. This list will not apply to special use permits and to conditional zoning districts when there was an extra condition that outlined for that specific project what was going to constitute a minor or major amendment. The next part of the ordinance deals with enforcement, which is one of our favorites. And Kendrick Stanton's going to be here to talk to you about that.
Article 5 is our enforcement violations and penalties. I'd like to start off with the citizen-initiated concerns, which are really commonly known as complaints. We take those in on a daily basis as far as for working through the process with that citizen who's raised this concern in terms of whether it be for the property or that parcel. What we do, and what I'd like to explain to you as far as for the investigation that goes into that complaint, is very thorough amongst our land use staff. We like to receive that complaint and immediately schedule an inspection so that that zoning officer can go out and assess to see if there is a violation present on the property. This is a really quick turnaround. And from personal experience, we generally have a good compliance rate as far as for getting that done. That brings me to go into the enforcement processes that we do use to resolve these situations, which is our civil and criminal. Both of these processes, or excuse me, both of these categories are effective. We initially start with a door hanger, which is something that is utilized to make contact with that owner or tenant at certain times to try to see if we can work with that individual before we assess or move further with a civil or a criminal penalty. And in terms of when the door hanger is not effective to establish contact, we will move towards the civil side, which initiates a notice of violation. That notice of violation establishes a timeline, of course, between us and that tenant or owner. And we'll try to set some compliance rules as far as for them actually solving or resolving the violation at their current property. If they're still unable to meet, being in compliance after the notice of violation, we proceed to the criminal side, which is our most effective. Unfortunately, it is the most effective way that we generally gain compliance. This sets a court date forward. Most of the time, when people understand that there's a court date involved, it seems to help with expediting things. So, once that court date is set, the day prior to that actual court date, we'll go out and we will assess and do a follow-up inspection to see if this is in compliance. If we find that it is, then we'll put a dismissal on their behalf that following day during the court proceeding. This brings us actually to the next exciting and probably the most exciting portion is our stop-work order with the change that we have set moving forward. Initially and currently, we work with our building inspectors to issue these. And what they are is a posted notification that has that individual or that owner cease all of what their current activity is that they're performing. So, for example, if they are constructing some type of accessory building or a house in some instances, that will put a stop immediately to what they are doing. And the biggest change for that is it's not only as far as for the building itself, this is including the development or the use for that actual property as well. So it encompasses everything as far as being in a whole in order for us to immediately be effective with making that impact. And I can tell you from personal experience, I've dealt with calls like that. And generally, our citizens are very appreciative of making sure everything is properly done. And the last point is our HOA covenants are not subject to county enforcement. And simply, that just means that we do not have any enforcement procedures that involve the HOA. We encourage, of course, citizens and whatnot to work with and work through their HOA if you have one established. And that's really as far as for what we can go on that. And I'd like to go ahead and have Mr. Carter Metcalf. He is our planner. He's going to be introducing and presenting for you all non-conformities.
So this next section is Article 6, where non-conformities vested rights. Often, the question comes up, what happens to a project that when it was developed followed all the proper rules, but now since we're changing the regulations, won't be meeting any of the new requirements? Well, this section deals directly with that question. A non-conformity can be a lot, structure, use, or site feature. And at the time when it was done, met all the requirements, filed all the proper permits. Or maybe they were done before zoning even existed in 2003 in Onslow County. And what Article 6 does is say that you can continue to do your thing. And however, as we've gone throughout this entire process, we've made sure that best efforts were taken to avoid these situations. This term is often referred to as grandfathering. And this is different than violations. If a project at the time when it was created didn't follow the necessary requirements or didn't obtain the proper permits, it was a violation then and will continue to be a violation under our new ordinance, which then would follow our Article 5, as Mr. Stanton just discussed. Now, as I mentioned previously, we do have provisions for continuing non-conformities, for even modifying them, if you want to expand it or enlarge them. We've taken serious efforts to make sure that these provisions are more clear than the current ordinance and that they meet all of the 160D requirements. The other section to Article 6 is vested rights. Vested rights details the timeline of how long an approval is valid for. These time periods, it's important to note, they've either stayed the same or they've only increased or are not taking away from anyone's vested right. And they will be 160D compliant. This covers everything from a building permit being valid for six months all the way up to a 25-acre multi-phase development having a vested right period of seven years. And we've been, again, to make sure that everything is 160D compliant along every step of the way. Next, I'd like to pass it over to Mr. Robert Goff, the planner with the department.
Article 7 covers the zoning districts and the changes that are occurring with them. As an overview, this involves the reduction of zoning districts, the protection of rural areas within the county, and the methodology we use to reassign zoning districts to properties that may have these changes. Protection of rural areas is a major focus point in the county. The Rural Agricultural Zoning District had a few changes in order to implement this. One of the things that we've done is increased the minimum lot size from 20,000 square foot to 40,000 square foot. Additionally, some permitted uses were removed or those were refined. Some examples of this include multifamily developments such as apartments that were allowed by special requirement in the current ordinance are no longer allowed in the RA district with the updated ordinance. The reduction of zoning districts covers the removal of the R-90 and the R-30M zoning district. And with that reduction, we've had a few goals. We wanted to minimize the occurrences of nonconformities, and we wanted to protect the integrity of neighborhoods. With the removal of the R-30M zoning districts, properties proposed to be RA or R-8M. The R-30M zoning district currently has a minimum lot size requirement of 30,000 square foot, and the M notes that manufactured homes are allowed. With the removal, these are either being assigned as RA or R-8M, and that's based off lot size. Again, with the RA zoning district, larger lot sizes would be zoned RA, and with smaller lot sizes, R-8M. Additionally, RA subdivisions are proposed to be zoned R-20, R-15, or R-10. Those, again, are based on lot size and the surrounding zoning. The change to these traditional zoning districts is because the RA zoning district does not offer the same protections that a traditional residential zone does. In the RA district, you can have an accessory structure in your front yard. Additionally, in a traditional neighborhood, that might be zoned RA if the home perhaps was burned down. It could be replaced with a manufactured home that doesn't conform to the surrounding community. So, it offers protections that a lot of property owners don't realize they don't have currently. Lastly, we have community business and highway business subdivisions are going to be R-5. In these cases, it's going to be multifamily developments. Multifamily residential developments are residential in nature, so it should match with a higher-density residential zone. R-5 achieves that, though it allows the higher density, but it also does not allow commercial uses that may be commonly allowed in commercial business or highway business districts. The principles applied to the zoning maps that we've changed. Zoning boundaries typically follow property lines and natural or man-made features where possible. This is important because when we made these changes to the zoning maps, there was a lot of split zoning that occurred, where one half of the property may be zoned highway business, and the other half is zoned rural agricultural. We've taken a look at those particular properties, and if they have a commercial use such as a shop, we've gone ahead and rezoned that entire property highway business, as opposed to if you're a farm, we would have applied rural agricultural zoning to that particular property. Zoning districts were selected that allow similar uses, lot sizes, and densities. Again, with the change of removing the R-90 zoning district and the R-30M zoning district, we wanted to allow residential in those residential zoning districts, but also allow manufactured homes where they weren't allowed before, and also prevent them where they're not in conformance with the surrounding community. New development is planned, appropriate zoning has been applied to avoid high number of rezoning petitions in the future. So, there are quite a few projects that come through our office, and there are quite a few developers or property owners who have plans for things in the future. If we came across some of these, whether the plans are already in our pipeline, or they're still a thought in one of the developer's heads, we've consulted with them to choose the best zoning district that fits their plan. Here, you'll see a list of the zoning districts that are found in the new zoning ordinance. The only change between this and the current ordinance is that we've removed the R-90 and the R-30M zoning district. In the following slides, I'll go over the maps. You may notice that it is hard to see what signified has been evaluated. When we've evaluated a property and decided it's going to be a particular zoning, it will reflect that color. It'll also reflect white dots. The dots themselves don't signify a change. If a property was rural agricultural and it is staying rural agricultural, it'll still show green with white dots. It just signifies that we've evaluated that property. On the opposite side of things, if we determine that it would best be commercial business, it'll go from a green to a blue with white dots. Here, you'll see the piney green and gum branch area. Again, the white dots may be hard to see, but it is much more clear online, which will be available to the public as well as you to visit. Later on in the presentation, you'll see contact information where you can get in touch with staff, or even go on the website, once these maps go active, where you can look up your property and see if a change has been made. Our second map covers the entire Sneed's Ferry area. Number three is the Swansboro and Hubert area. Four is the Southwest and Verona area. Five is the Catherine Lake and Roadstown area. And six is the entire Richlands area, which includes the town of Richlands. The gray signifies that that is not our jurisdiction. The town of Richlands is their own municipality. We have no zoning there. And number seven is the White Oak area. These maps are still changing, so we continue to seek input from the public as well as you all. We would like to note that any modifications may be made through April 30th. However, if somebody contacts us or requests a modification, it still has to meet the methodology that we use to assign zoning districts. I'd like to reintroduce Angie Manning to cover lot and structure standards.
Article eight is the dimensional requirement standards of the zoning ordinance, and they was applied to every zoning district within the ordinance. We have a number of lot size changes that we wanted to highlight for you. As was previously stated, the RA zoning district lot size minimum is increasing from 20,000 to 40,000 square feet, which is just under one acre. There have been minimum lot sizes established for commercial zoning districts, and there's an allowance for the special purpose lots that were also accommodated in the subdivision ordinance that was passed last summer, which are lots for private cemeteries, off-site septic systems, stormwater, BMPs, and those type things. Residential accessory structures are a hot topic. We have a lot of complaints about those from property owners, and you remember in 2019, we spent quite a bit of time reassessing where they can be placed, what their setbacks are going to be, and those standards have been integrated into the draft ordinance because they've been working quite well. One of the things that we didn't address at that time that has become more and more of an issue is an area limit, the size limit of accessory structures. And we're talking about enclosed accessory structures, not your swimming pool and your open deck and that kind of thing, but a limitation on the size of accessory structures being limited to 25% of the square footage of the principal dwelling. Now, this isn't going to apply in the RA zoning districts, because in those districts, you can have two principal uses, so it stands to reason that there would be no limit on the size of your accessory structure. Also doesn't apply to commercial accessory structures, because a warehouse serving a small retail is not uncommon and is certainly necessary. Setback changes, there are a few setback changes that we've removed to simplify things and to make things easier for people to navigate. We have the front setback standards for secondary roads and thoroughfares has been removed from the ordinance, so we're going to yield to whatever that zoning district setback applies. And in that light, the RA zoning district has increased from a 25-foot setback to a 30-foot setback, as most of those properties are going to be on those secondary roads. The front setback for the residential 15 zoning district has been reduced from 25 feet to 20 feet, and the side yard setbacks in the R-8M and the R-5 zoning districts are proposed to be reduced from eight feet to five feet. These are the medium and high-density residential districts, and it just makes sense to allow for more compact development. There's been a standardization for setback encroachment allowances. Currently, there are two different standards, depending on the type of encroachment you're talking about, whether it's a porch or an overhang, and we've standardized that encroachment to be 18 inches for any of those kinds of structures that they could encroach into that setback area. One of the setback changes that we did not change is maintaining an administrative reduction of 30% on nonconforming lots. We've used that historically in neighborhoods where the lot size minimum doesn't meet the minimum requirement, and staff could administratively reduce those lot, those setback standards to help achieve a project for someone, especially some of those older lots that accommodated the smaller mobile homes back in the day that you, that need a little bit of relief. We've applied that, and we've maintained that, because that's worked quite well, and it keeps property owners from having to seek a variance or special use procedure through a board of adjustment. Now, I'm going to turn it back over to Carter Metcalf, who's going to talk to you about the additional required standards.
This next section will be Article nine, or additional required standards. We also commonly refer to them as ARS. And this section of the new zoning ordinance will be replacing these special requirements of the current zoning ordinance. We are especially proud of this article with its increased efficiency, organization, and it being very user-friendly for the development community and administrative staff. In our Article nine, there's also the table of permitted uses, a table very common and very important to zoning ordinances. And we think ours will be particularly innovative in the fact that we will have a new column, and the right column, instead of it being a zoning district, it will be labeled ARS, and will have the reference number to these standards and where it's located in the ordinance. Therefore, you'll be able to look, find your use, see if it's permitted or done by special use, and then you can go look in the ordinance, and it's going to tell you where to look instead of searching around for forever. Now, our ARS will be, will apply regardless of developmental approval. So they will apply whether it's administrative, legislative, or quasi-judicial, because those standards apply to the use, not to its approval nature. And we've also done some serious work in adjusting some uses from being special use to permitted by right. And in those circumstances, we took it very seriously, and we made sure that ARS were accompanying that transition. Those additional required standards came from conditions that the Board of Adjustment were commonly putting on those use, on those uses, and on those special use permits, as Ms. Rue mentioned earlier in the presentation. And we're going to walk through Article nine, and you'll see on the screen, those are the different sections. Those sections mirror the table of uses for increased efficiency and usability. And the overall intent of Article nine is to mitigate any sort of negative impacts that a use may have on adjacent properties, and also to keep the, the character of a community. And with this new zoning ordinance, we are repealing some other ordinances of the county, such as the wireless and telecommunication and broadcast towers, and the manufactured home park ordinance. Those standards, however, have not been thrown away, they've simply just been incorporated into this article. We've also made sure to update them for consistency and make sure they're still doing what we want them to do. So for our first section, agriculture, there's no ARS standards there, we simply just reserved it. And often, in the ARS article, there are a few hot topics that come up. In the residential section, we have the multifamily standards. They are simply mostly about open space requirements and the density that would be allowed there. We also have the manufactured home park standards. There, not only do they have their own set, but they'll be required to meet all of the multifamily standards as well, both a residential in nature, but have a commercial element to them. We will also, the manufactured home parks will now be permitted in R-8M and no longer in RA. This is to keep with our original intent of the entire project to preserve the rural character of the RA district. Also, manufactured homes will now require underpinnings, no matter if they're just one or in a manufactured home park. That standard used to only apply in a manufactured home park, now will be for even just a single manufactured home. And also, as we've talked about, we've changed our home occupation standards, and they are found as well in the residential section. We looked at what didn't work, and there have been some changes in Onslow County since those were made, and we wanted to address those, to take out any gray area and make sure we're supporting our zoning enforcement officers out there in the field. The civic, government, and institutional section just has an ARS for private cemeteries, and it just deals with the acreage requirement of whether or not it's to be permitted or by special use, and that boundary is at two acres. The office and service section, I want to point out two things. We've incorporated the taxidermy, recent text amendment to the current zoning ordinance, can be found there, and we simply just updated it for consistency. And also, many of the uses that have ARS standards there, it's really for their outdoor storage, and we just wanted to make sure that there's adequate buffering between them and any sort of adjacent properties. Recreation and entertainment section, we have a notable one with our campgrounds, which are for RVs or campers. Here, there are two class types, and it's based off their acreage and number. An important feature here is that they will be required to have paved roads, and this comes from conditions that our Board of Adjustment has been putting on those type of approvals. We will also be requiring two entrances if it's over 30 sites or 30 spaces, and that's for our tier two. And again, that's also working with the conditions the Board of Adjustment's been putting on them, as well as our partners over at the, the Department of Transportation, as well as our folks over that deal with fire code. And the additional transportation, utility, and warehousing is a long name, and one of the big highlights there is the incorporation of the telecommunicate, wireless telecommunication and broadcast towers. We've simply, again, just updated those standards to make sure they're consistent with the rest of the ordinance. Our miscellaneous section has just our accessory structures and incorporated our wildlife and sanctuary rehabilitation center text amendment to the current ordinance, that was recent. Our temporary section, we think, is pretty innovative. There are some uses that are simply temporary in nature, and will come and will go. One of those we like to point out is the disaster relief housing. It's in the case that an individual's home was destroyed by a disaster, and they need to temporarily live in an RV. We made sure this name is very specific and intentional, because it mirrors neighboring counties. So that way, in the event posted disaster, heaven forbid, that we would be able to have increased inter-county communication and coordination if the event were to arise. And next, I'd like to welcome Ms. Angie Manning back up here to the podium to cover Article 10.
Article 10 outlines development standards. These are, in addition to the ARS standards that Mr. Metcalf just went through, these are standards that apply mostly to commercial and multifamily developments. When we first started this process in 2016, there was discussion about developing some commercial appearance standards, and there was specific discussion about incorporating architectural design standards. But with the recent economic situation, we felt like now was really not the time to implement those types of standards. They can be costly, and we just felt like now wasn't the time to do that, so we maintained the landscaping standards that had been developed in that previous draft. The landscaping standards are found in three sections. There's a streetscape requirement for a road frontage of a commercial development to have a 10-foot landscaped area that would be planted with either shade trees, ornamental trees, or landscape berm, so that each property owner would have an option to determine what they felt was going to be most appropriate for their project and for their site. There's internal landscaping requirements for parking lots, and there's a lot of graphics in the ordinance that help under, explain how those are to be applied and how they would look in the different options that are available for those. And then we have site feature screening requirements, where a dumpster on a commercial site would need to be screened from public view. So if it's in the back of the project and you can't see it from the street, it wouldn't have to be screened, but we encourage those type of screening processes as well. The buffer section has been extended. Currently, we just have four different buffer options. We now have four types of buffers, depending on the types of uses that are being buffered. So, a buffer standard between an industrial use and a single-family neighborhood would be a greater buffer than what would be required between a single-family neighborhood and a multifamily neighborhood. And so there's four different types, and there's a chart that helps explain which buffer is required for which type of development. And then there's three options when, within each of those four types, again, to give the property owner an opportunity to choose which one best fits his needs and best fits that property itself. In terms of our parking and loading area standards, there's not really a whole lot of changes there in terms of numbers. The biggest change was The biggest change was to make the consistency in the use table for the permitted uses and those different groupings in that parking standards. In terms of applicability to these landscaping standards, this is going to apply to new commercial and multifamily development. It's going to also apply when there's a significant expansion requested for either the building footprint or a parking lot footprint. So if there's an existing commercial building that's changing of use from an office building to a retail building, there will not be a retrofit requirement there to make that use achievable. So we're really looking at this to establish for new commercial coming in because retrofitting can be very expensive and can prohibit the reuse of buildings, and we certainly don't want to do that. The next article involves overlay districts. We're maintaining the two current overlay districts that we have, the U.S. 17 thoroughfare and the flight path overlay district, staying the same on the map and in the text. We've created a new overlay district to accommodate existing setback standards that are unique to the Golden Acres subdivision in the Sneed's Ferry area. That requirement now is kind of hidden in the text, and this is going to be an overlay so it's front and center and everyone understands what that requirement is. And it's just going to be for those waterfront lots. In the overlay section, we've also done a reservation for several other overlay districts. There's a couple of different districts that were called for in the Sneed's Ferry Community Plan that are reserved. There's also some recommendations in the most recent joint land use study for overlay districts that have been reserved, and there's also a reservation for an airport overlay district for that Ellis Airport. And now I'm going to turn it over to Jesse to talk to you about signs.
So this board just reviewed signs a few meetings ago, maybe a few months ago. We took your input and we incorporated that into the ordinance, and essentially what you're going to see in this article is we've reorganized it. That said, we have a couple of more hot topics that we did address within the text of this ordinance. One thing that has been coming up quite a bit lately is the brightness of several electronic signs that have gone in, and we have taken measures to address the level of illumination allowed moving forward when we permit those signs that need to be signed off by our land use staff, the manufacturer of the sign, the owner, as well as our electrical inspector. So that should eliminate some of that problem in the brightness. That's becoming a problem because it impacts everything from motorists to air traffic. The next situation is one I think we're all familiar with, and we'll refer to it as the Domino Situation. We had a situation where we had no regulations in a shopping center with multiple tenants and nothing saying that each tenant needed a portion of the space in order to receive that much square footage on a sign. That has been addressed. We've maintained our master sign package. That's something that's unique to our existing ordinance that we've moved forward. That's a way to encourage an innovative grouping of signs. If somebody's doing a large project with multiple buildings or a shopping center and wants to come in and cohesively apply it for the signs altogether, they have a little bit more flexibility and can save a little bit of money going that route. And it also standardizes the setbacks that are required for sign. We have some wonky stuff in our current ordinance right now about signs being one foot off of a right of way here, two foot there. They're scattered about all throughout specific sections of the ordinance. That will be no longer. Anything you need to know about signs is going to be located right here, easily identifiable right here in Article 12. I certainly hope you have learned so much this evening. However, if you are thirsty for more, any of you here or any of you watching with us at home, we have set up a website that will go live for this project on Tuesday, April 6th. What you will find on our project website will be a variety of documents specific to zoning districts where you can go learn about how all of these items that have been discussed tonight play into your specific property. If you're not sure what your specific property is zoned, our awesome GIS department has made a fun tool where all you need to do is type in your address, and it's going to show you your current zoning and what your zoning will be after July 1st, should this go through. If you're not comfortable zooming in on those maps we are referencing, they'll be there and they're zoomable to an amazing quality if you want to do that. However, for most people, it will be sufficient to go in and use this tool, figure out your zoning, and then look at what applies to you. And of course, you'll be able to download the most current draft of the ordinance. We continue to make modifications on spacing errors and tiny things we overlooked until it gets posted up there, and of course, we'll go to the commissioners for their review. And that's located at onslowcountync.gov/2021zoning. Maybe you can't find what you need. We invite anyone that wants more information on this that can't find it themselves to give us a call. The land use line will connect you to some of our staff members, specifically the ones that have presented to you this evening, by hitting Option 3. We ask that you do not call our permitting line. We've had a record-breaking year so far in permitting, and we'd like these calls directed to land use staff. That number is 455-3661-OPTION3. We also have an email address established for this project where if you want to call out concerns or specific areas of the text or ask a question, you can go there as well. And this will go in, and all of our land use staff members will see when those come in, and we can respond to them. We do ask, since we maintain other responsibilities throughout our day besides getting this ordinance adapted, that you're patient with us and give us one or two days to respond in some cases. There are some people out there we are looking for direct input from. The reason I'm calling out these specific situations is because if we can save you time and money by changing the zoning map beforehand, if you know you're interested in pursuing a project, we would love to work with you to make that happen. People that this may apply to are on the screen. You may have a large tract of land that you know is going to be converted to some other use. We'd like to talk to you to make sure that you have the appropriate zoning district on our new map. If you have plans for a large project that you have not presented to our land use staff or not taken through TRC, we'd like to hear from you to make sure that we have the appropriate zoning on your property. If you are planning a business or a commercial development, or you have recently obtained sewer access on property, we'd like to talk to you to make sure that we have the appropriate zoning district that matches the density that's appropriate for that area. And if you're operating a business that is zoned rural agricultural, we want to make sure that we've got the appropriate zoning district on you too, or determine whether or not you should stay R.A. So those are great situations where we'd be interested in speaking with you to, again, see if we can save you the hassle of going through a rezoning in the next few years. We are excited that we'll be hosting two public workshops on this. For anyone that would like to come out, ask specific questions, view hard copies of our maps, or have a little bit of assistance in understanding how this zoning ordinance may apply to you, we have two in-person workshops. They will be from 1 to 4 on Wednesday, April 28th, in Room 111 here at the Government Center. And we'll offer another option in the evening for people that that may be more convenient for the next day on Thursday, April 29th, right here in this room, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners chambers. This is a really wonderful opportunity if you're concerned and think you, we made an error on the map and you are not zoned right, to come out and talk to us. We are absolutely willing, as Robert stated, to work within the methodology and within spot zoning laws and things like that to continue to modify this map so it works and people are happy with what they're zoned and the protections they're getting from that zoning district. We can continue to make those changes again through April 30th. So these two in-person opportunities are a wonderful chance to come do that. I want to mention, because this is a large-scale rezoning, some of our outreach efforts. I'm mentioning this because there are certain steps that may seem unusual because they are beyond the scope of what we normally do with our 300-foot notification for our regular rezoning requests and our normal little ad we put in the public hearing for a text amendment request. This goes beyond that. Because we are literally replacing a zoning map, even though many of the properties on it are not going to see a zoning change, in fact, the vast majority will not, this needs to follow these procedures. If you own property in Onslow County, but you reside outside of Onslow County, outside of an Onslow County zip code, we will need to send you a notification that's going to come on a postcard notifying you that the Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing on this on May 17th. So, we have identified over 10,000 people that this applies to, 10,000 parcels. I want for anyone that took the time to watch this to understand, if you fell in that category, you may get a postcard and see absolutely no change. It's very likely. You can go on there and double-check, but this is a requirement the state says we have to do. Something the state does not tell us we have to do ironically is to notify in a mass rezoning or a large-scale rezoning directly impacted property owners. We will be doing that anyways. The same postcards that get sent out required to the out-of-town owners will be sent to properties we've identified as having known changes, and we have not run those numbers yet as we continue to modify the map. That will be done prior to the first day we are allowed to start the official required outreach, which is April 23rd. In addition to notifying via postcard and directing people to the public hearing and this informational website, in all of the areas, specifically the subdivisions that are seeing a rezoning, mostly going from R.A. to some residential district, a sign will be posted. We have identified 218 locations this applied to and have ordered these signs this week. So you are aware, they will be put out there, and they look very much similar to our rezoning signs because the entire neighborhood has a proposed rezoning district. As serving on the planning board, members of the community may approach you about, "What in the world is this sign?" That sign is out there because in order for us to check all the boxes and legally get this map and ordinance adopted, we had to put it there. We are required by state statutes to, this is a requirement we were hoping would go away with 160D, but it's still hanging on, two half-page ads in a newspaper of general circulation. The first advertisement needs to be posted at least 10 days, but no more than 25 days prior to the scheduled public hearing. So you will see two large half-page ads run in the Jacksonville Daily News on May 3rd and May 10th are our proposed dates, guiding people again to a public hearing that has been established or called for on May 17th, as well as, again, directing them to the website for more information. We'll also be pushing forward, as of next week, social media campaigns, not only for the required public hearing, but for our optional, unrequired informational public workshops that will be April 28th and 29th. We'll also be asking for advertising to be posted on those items on GTV. This will lead up to our May 17th required Board of Commissioners public hearing, right here in the Commissioner Chambers that will start at 6:00. I'd like to take this moment to pause and ask the Chairwoman if she desires to take a short break right now.
Yeah, we'd like to take a five-minute break to collect our thoughts a little bit, and then we will be back for questions, concerns, and some more discussion. Thank you very much, Jessica. Welcome back, everybody. We've come now, after our presentation, to the discussion and question portion of our meeting tonight. So I'd like to start with the board members down at this end. Mr. Seitz, do you have any questions, concerns, anything you want to talk about with the proposed new ordinance?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. How about?
No, ma'am, I have nothing.
Nothing? Mr. Howard, okay, thank you. Roger?
I'd just like to commend the board for all your hard work. That presentation was awesome, and a lot of time went into it. I think it's going to help the county, and I'm willing to look forward to working with them.
Right. Melissa?
I'm good.
Okay, well, I had just a couple things that I wanted to ask y'all. I mean, they're minor, and they're just probably clarifications. In the part of the ordinance where it gives the makeup of the planning board and the Board of Adjustment, there are no categories defined for those members, which my understanding is that there are certain categories for each board, like you have to be from the White Oak Township, one of your members.
That's open, that's under bylaws, and that we didn't codify.
Okay. And it's, okay.
We have independent bylaws that are maintained in the clerk's office that calls for that, yeah.
Okay, because it covered just about everything else with regard to those two boards. Okay, and on page 426 in Section 4, for major site plans, I know that the authority for the approval of development, subdivision development or other development, has been assumed by the staff, and it does refer in that section to referral for approval by the board. So are we talking, is that something that was left in there by mistake, or?
So if it's a use that's permitted by right, it would be approved by staff. If it's a use that has to have a special use permit, or if it's a site plan that's in conjunction with a conditional zoning, it would go to that appropriate board.
Okay.
So the language is there to allow for.
Okay, okay, takes care of that. And then the only other thing is, well, maybe not the only other thing, under the wind energy, Section 9, it's around page 35, I don't remember which one it is, but it refers to restoration of these wind energy facilities after a hurricane. And I was just thinking that, I know we have a lot of hurricanes here, but we also have floods. We might have an earthquake at some point, a big forest fire, something like that. Should the major disaster clause in that part of the ordinance refer to other natural disasters, or not necessarily mention all the natural disasters, but refer to and other disasters that may damage those facilities?
Absolutely. We're happy to add that, and that's a wonderful recommendation.
Thank you. And then I just wondered if all the townships that have their own zoning ordinances in Onslow County, are they covered by the land use plan that Onslow County has?
No, ma'am. Several jurisdictions are covered because they elected not to make their own. Most of our municipalities elected to create their own so they had more control over their zoning.
Okay. And I think that was all I had. I would like to echo Roger in commending the staff. You all have done a ton of work. We've been privy to seeing what you've been doing over the last year or two when you bring all of these proposed changes to us for our input and approval and recommendations. And so I know what little we've done, y'all have done 5,000 times more work. So we really appreciate it. With that, the staff is requesting that the planning board make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to adopt ZTA-2021-00001, which will repeal the current zoning ordinance, adopted originally on December 15th, 2003, and its subsequent amendments, and replace it with the reorganized 160D compliant zoning ordinance to be effective on July 1st, 2021. The staff is also recommending the adoption of the consistency statement for ZTA-2021-00001. So I am requesting a motion from the planning board to recommend these changes and the adoption of this zoning amendment with the recommended modifications that we've already talked about a little bit. talked about a little bit with the County Commissioners. We have a motion. My Ms. Keeps?
Second.
Roger has seconded the motion. Everybody in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, in addition to that, the staff is also requesting that we make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to adopt PREZ-2021-00001, repealing the current official zoning map of Onslow County, which was also originally adopted in December of 2003, and all the amendments, and to replace it with the proposed official zoning map of Onslow County with an effective date of July 1st, 2021. The staff is also requesting the adoption of the consistency statement for PREZ-2021-00001. And there may or may not be additional modifications to that map, I understand.
That's right, and thank you for pointing that out. We understand that the map right now is still fluid. Robert described the map the other day as a very, very almost-done final draft. That said, we still want to continue to do outreach because we'd like to get the map, how people need it, how they'd like to see it. As long as it meets those parameters he very clearly described in the methodology of how we assign zoning districts, we'll make those modifications up until April 30th. And the April 30th cutoff day is because we need to start preparing these items for the agenda to go through the Board of Commissioners' official public hearing process, and that's the date we need that information to move forward.
Okay, so the zoning map standards and the proposed zoning map are what we're, what we need a motion for to approve for recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners.
I make a motion for that.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll say.
I'll say.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for all your hard work. Okay, comments, planning board members? Start down here with Mr. Sides.
Well, I was going to say my thank you to the staff for their hard work in this part, but Roger kind of went ahead and opened the door for that. But again, knowing how much hard work that you've all put into this, the citizens of the county should certainly appreciate that effort. Whether or not they'll be happy with everything that you've put forth, we'll see. But thank you again.
Very good presentation, very good. Yeah, thank you all.
Melissa?
I concur. Thank you.
Enjoyed it, thank you very much.
And I'm really excited because I know this board, and you all have put in so much time, work over the last, actually, almost six years, counting when you really started. So thank you. And planning board, I mean, planning department staff, any comments from you guys?
Just the public information workshops in April the 28th and 29th for the public to come out, and then the public hearing on May the 17th. The middle day is Monday, so we don't know yet if you'll have some agenda items for the May meeting, but we will let you know.
Okay. Robert?
No comments, other than, again, this is a very fluid map. It is a fine-tuned, rough draft for a final draft. There's been thousands of properties that have been evaluated, and I've still got 300 more to do, and I recently got some help with that. So it's been going at a pretty fast rate. We hope to have this done in about a week.
Right, thank you so much. Jessica, Carter, Kendrick?
I have nothing to add. I appreciate your patience with all the time it took to get this done, both occasions. And we're very excited to start using it. As was stated in the presentation, the things that are changing, we've got good reasons for, and we hope that they truly improve people's lives on the land.
Yep, Carter?
Thank you.
Kendrick?
I appreciate you guys' time and just hearing us out. Definitely, this staff all together has put a lot of work into it.
Yeah. And with all that work, you're going to really make it so much easier for the developers, the builders, us, everybody out there.
And us.
And you, yeah.
But we don't get too many angry faces and angry calls, but we'll find that.
I hope not. I hope they'll be happy calls.
That's right.
All right, if there's no further business, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.